My name is Mark Berry. I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation. And welcome, and again, thank you for your time. This is the first of what will be a couple of other public engagement, public forums. Barry Dunn has been here for the last three days. They've done six focus group meetings. They met with about 75 folks from the community that represent a number of different interests within the community. There's been also some stakeholder meetings, and there will be, continue to be some of those stakeholder meetings virtually next week. The Recreation Master Plan, we are updating, the last time it was done was 2009. And this is, this is going to be the department's guiding document and the town's guiding document, but it's really your guiding document. This is not about what I want, not about what my staff wants, this is all about what you want. So, public engagement is a really big part of this. And like I said, we've done focus groups, meetings for the last three days, and there will be other opportunities, I think I shared with most everybody here, a card where you can go to Greater Groton and share your thoughts. And there will also be a statistically valid survey that people will be, that a select group of people will be receiving. And also an open link survey after the statistically valid survey. And at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Tom from Barry Dunn.
Thank you, Mark. My name is Tom Deal. I'm a manager with Barry Dunn, very happy to be here. This is, as Mark said, our first public forum. My partner Lisa is here. We're going to tell you a little bit about us and our company, and then we have a presentation. We will have plenty of time for your input and feedback. We're going to go through the entire presentation before we take the questions, that way you'll see everything we've learned, and then we can go back to any slide and ask any question. We're definitely looking for your input. So, I'm showing up on the screen who our team is from Barry Dunn. As I said, I'm a manager with Barry Dunn. I've been in this business my, pretty much my entire life. I've done about 90 projects like this in 41 different states. I worked in three universities before. I've been a lacrosse coach, a physical education instructor, intermural director, a director of recreational sports. I've built pools, fields, buildings. I've been a custodian, and I've been a cemetery superintendent. So, basically, any job that Mark has in his organization, I have done. I live in Virginia. I grew up in upstate New York in Syracuse, went to Syracuse University, then I worked at Lemoine College and Maris College before I went to work at Virginia Commonwealth University. This is what I've been doing for the last eight years. We travel a bit, we go into communities, we learn a lot about a community, and we try to do our best to help. We're doing a strategic or a Park and Recreation Master Plan, and what we'll be doing is going through several steps, which I'll explain. And in the end, we're looking to provide the town with a plan that has implementable actions and goals and objectives so that you can do things over the next three, five, seven, 10 years. I'd like to let Lisa introduce herself.
Hi, good evening, everybody. We really appreciate you coming out tonight and sharing with, hearing everything that the community had to say. I'm Lisa Wolf. I'm a former retired Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. I reside down in North Carolina and graduate of Elon University. I don't know if you've ever heard of Elon, anybody? Show of hands, Mark only. Yeah, so I'm real excited. I was here in town before, working with the town for the Mystic Education Center Pratt Facility. And unfortunately, that kind of has been put on a standstill at this point, but I am familiar with the town quite a bit, and I'm excited to be here with you all tonight and to be part of this process moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. As you can see, there's some food and snacks and drinks over here. Please feel free to get up and help yourself as often as you'd like. There's restrooms right out in the hall. We have three people at the moment, I think it's three, joining us via Zoom. Four now. The, the meeting is being recorded, just so everyone knows, and it will be, it's being livestreamed as well, and then it'll be available for review afterwards. We also have another team that's helping us from Weston and Sampson. They're a landscape architecture firm. If you were in your parks in the last few days, you may have seen a lady riding around on a pink bike. That was Amy. She's working with us, and she was assessing all of your parks. As Mark said, we came in Monday morning, we flew in Monday, and we started our meetings on Tuesday. We spent about three, three and a half hours with Mark driving around. We saw your different recreation facilities, your parks, your community center. We spent a lot of time here. So, we've seen pretty much all of your facilities. Lisa and I have stayed in a hotel nearby, and we've eaten in a lot of local restaurants. We stayed away from all of the chains. So, we've had a pretty good time. We've gotten to know quite a few people. It's very important, we haven't made any decisions yet, and we do want your input. So, as we get through the presentation, then we're going to ask for your input, and we want to hear what you have to say. If, I see several of you were in our focus groups from before, and you know, they were open conversations, we had nice conversations, we took a lot of notes, and you'll see what we've learned. These are some of the groups of people that we met with, and we asked Mark purposely to help us with focus groups that were a mixture of people. So, in our focus groups, we, we had a parent, we had, you know, a coach, we had someone who was interested in soccer, or someone who was interested in swimming, different things, rather than just one group of, of the same group of people. And we talked for an hour and a half, got to know each other, and got to learn a lot of what their thoughts were. We have met with different town council members, we've met with members from the RMT, we met with people, did I say that right? I never say it right. It's RTM. Sorry, I apologize. I also did work in Brooklyn, Mass, and they had a meeting, they have meeting, they have town meeting members, and I think it's, gets me confusing. We're going to meet with the Park and Recreation Commission later. We did talk to several of them during our focus groups and met with some of them as stakeholders. We did have a special focus group yesterday over at the community center with teens. So, we met with over 30, almost 35 teens for an hour and a half there, and then watched them have a pizza party. This morning, we had a focus group with people that were, English as their second language. So, we really have met with quite a few people, and we have some other stakeholder meetings still to go. We did a staff SWOT analysis, and then we had a staff meeting Tuesday with the staff, reviewed the results of the SWOT analysis. Up here, what I'm showing you is, we have many different ways we're trying to gather information. And what we want to let you know is, we, we don't make a decision just because we heard something in a focus group, or just because it came up on the survey, or we saw it in a park, or Mark said something. We take everything we're learning and collect it together, and we have a, what we call a key issue matrix, where we put all the information there, and then we also record how we learned about it. And as we're going along, we start learning themes and, and realizing what important things are. These are the questions that we asked everyone in our focus groups, and we're going to go through them today, one after another. I'm going to show you the question we asked, and then tell you the responses that we heard from people. And we're going to go all the way through the presentation, 15, 20 minutes, and then we'll come back, and then we're going to ask you, did we miss something? What else do you want us to know? What is on your mind? The reason we go through the whole presentation first is, the questions are kind of laid out, and a lot of times, something you want to say right in the beginning, we're going to address as we go through, hopefully. Any questions so far? Okay, any, anything from Zoom yet? Okay. So, as Mark said, we met with 76 different people, and we asked them how long they had lived in the town, were they a resident, were they someone who worked here but didn't live here? And our goal was to make sure that we talked to some people that have lived here a very long time, know the history of the town, have been here a long time. We also wanted to talk to people that had been here less amount of time, and we wanted to talk to some people that maybe have just moved here within the last five years, and kind of see how they like it. And even to talk to some people that had just moved in. So, you can see by our pie chart, we were pretty successful at that. 29% of the people we talked to had lived here for more than 20 years. 35% of the people had lived here between 10 and 19 years. 18% had only lived here between five and nine years. We talked to 10% of the people who had lived here less than five years. So, we got all of those categories, and we talked to 8% of the people that don't live here, but might come and work here, or might come and use the parks and facilities. Okay? By a show of hands, how many of you have lived here for more than 20 years? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight? Okay? How many have lived here between 10 and 19 years? One, two, three, four, five, six? How many have lived here between five and nine years? That's good. One? Okay? How many have lived here less than five years? Two? And how many do not live here, but might work or use facilities? None. Can you tell on the Zoom, did you get anything from that? Okay?
Well, we have, it looks like we might have. If Richard Loach has a question.
I was just answering the question. I've been here five to nine years.
Thank you. We normally, when we set up the meetings, set up the Zoom meeting ourselves, and we're able to chat different things. We're using the town system, so it's just taking us a little bit of time to get used to it. So, again, I think the group of people that are here tonight is nice and representative. I think the shortest amount of time that we talked to somebody that had lived here was less than one year, because we had an infant in our meeting this morning. Next, we asked people, what are the strengths of the Park and Recreation Department? And we asked that because we wanted to know what's going well. We wanted to see what you thought was going well compared to what the staff told us, compared to what we saw in our own observations. And we wanted to make sure that maybe we celebrate those and that we don't change those or forget those. Is that too small to read? If it is, I'll read it out loud. I don't have any problem. Okay. So, these are not all of the strengths. You see, there's a green bar next to them. The longer the bar, the more often we heard it. So, when we asked about strengths, people mentioned staffing. Many people mentioned that in our conversation. Thrive 55 plus center. Almost the same number of people men, mentioned that as a strength. Excellent recreation programs for special needs. Quite a few people mentioned that. And I wanted to just mention one thing here. Something can be a strength to you and a weakness to someone else. Okay? And we told everyone in these meetings, there was no right answer or no wrong answer. And we're still in the information gathering stage that helps us build our survey that we're going to do. Youth sports and special programs. And then, strong in programming, inclusive of all residents. We heard that quite a lot. Trails and open spaces. Quality athletic facilities at, and I'm not going to be able to say that, no matter how long I spend here in the P Park, how do you say it? Aquanic Park. Okay? Your parks were considered a strength. Proximity to water. Collaboration with other departments and playgrounds. With the 76 people that we talked to, those were the things that we heard multiple times, and we kind of categorized them into those groups. There were some other things that we maybe only heard mentioned once. Again, we're going to go through this, and then we're going to come back and ask you, what did we miss? What would you like to add? Next, we asked, what were weaknesses or areas of improvement that you would like to see addressed? Okay? We heard lack of lights on fields, quite a lot. We heard a lack of an aquatic facility. We heard facilities are not well planned. We heard the town council and the RTM are cutting the budget. And again, whether this is factual or not, this is what people said. We heard that the department is understaffed, there's a shortage of all fields. Lack of programming for under five tweens and young adults. Do you all know what a tween is? After your, it's where you're between a young adult and a teen. It's just before you're a teenager. That's right? Okay. We also heard trails for mobility, for vision, wheelchairs, there were some issues with those. And again, our person Amy with the pink bike was out there looking all of that, and we'll, we'll have a pretty good idea of that shortly. There's no water-based activities in the parks. Some people said the affordability of programs was a weakness. Marketing, external communication and promotions. Staffing at the Groton Community Center is limited. Lack of indoor recreation space. Confusion between the city and the town. We rode around with Mark, like I said, for three hours, and we talked an awful lot. We did some research before we came here. And right when Mark got done telling us about the city, town, and all of that, we were driving in, and there was a sign that said, "Welcome to Groton." So, I said to him, I said, "Is that the town or the city?" A weakness, people said, was not serving the entire community, needing better access to the water, conditions of the playgrounds, Route 12 being a barrier with no safe crossing in the western area, and the ability to recruit sponsorships is limited by staff. Again, these were ones that we heard multiple times. We have some other ones that we heard once, and when we get back to you, we're going to add all of your comments to our list as well. This was a pretty neat exercise. We asked people to tell us what they thought of the current conditions of your parks, your facilities, and your programs, and tell us their level of satisfaction. The first one is parks. The red stands for fair, that little, it's pretty short. The blue stands for good, it's pretty tall, and the green was very good. So, of the, all the people we talked about, that's kind of, some of them thought they were fair, some of them thought they were good, and some thought they were very good. We did the same thing with fields. Some thought the orange is very, is poor, the red is fair, the blue is good, and the green is very good, and the purple is excellent. And then we did the same thing with trails. The highest line was red for poor. Green was fairly high for good. Indoor recreation facilities, the two highest lines were poor and fair. And then programs by the department, the highest line was the green for very good. What was, some of you were in our meetings, what was kind of neat to experience were, there were people in the meeting who rated the fields excellent, but don't use them, but they've seen them, and they drive by them, and they're there. There were some people that said they heard there were trails, same thing, but then there were other people that actually like used the trails and said they're excellent. So, again, there's some communication, some education, and some promotion opportunities We asked about areas within the town that are underserved. We shared a map of the town, and what we were asking is, are there areas in the town, and that could either be locations, the northwest corner, the upper corner, you know, either side of 95 along Route 1, or it could be segments or groups of people. It could be seniors, it could be tweens, it could be softball players, we, you know, we just left it out there. And what we heard, in no particular order, people in the western side of the town of Groton near the Navy Base, people thought they were underserved. Esker Point Park, people near there might be underserved. The fact that there were mobility issues for people with different abilities. The fact that there was need for public transportation might mean some people are being underserved. People in District 4 might be underserved. Young adults. Entire early child population. People in the Groton People in the Groton Estates might be underserved. Women's sports. Aquaculture areas. The minority population might be underserved. The northeast sector of the town. Field Crest, Sutton Park, P Plains. How do you say it again? Plaquonic Plains. And Branford Manor. And what was funny is, not funny, but unique, somebody that lived in there might have said they're underserved. And there were times, there were people that lived somewhere that someone else said that area's underserved, and they were like, "We're doing okay." So, you know, it's just a lot to learn in some people's opinions. Anything on chat? Okay? So then we asked about what new recreation amenities people would like to see. Amenities are brick and mortar, buildings, equipment, parks, fields, things like that. The number-one thing, kind of a tie, was an indoor recreation center and a year-round aquatic facility. Also very high were restrooms at, at the fields. Family restrooms. Multimodal trails. Athletic complex central with lights and multiple fields. Lighted synthetic turf fields were the highest ones. Park shelters. Splash pads in the park. Do you know what a splash pad is? It's where there's a flat surface, and it can be triggered so the water comes up out of the ground. Kids, people can run through it, get cooled off, can play in it. Water goes back down in the ground. Passive recreation. People wanted more passive recreation. That might be a area in a park where there's some benches, or a reflection garden, or, you know, a place where you're walking along a trail and you can stop and just enjoy nature. Nicer playgrounds at parks where there aren't tournaments. Outdoor passive living rooms. This came up with our conversation with the, the teens at the community center. They're looking for something to do after school. They go to the community center. They'd also like to maybe go to the park. If they could go to the park, and there was a shelter or shade that, if it was sunny or drizzling, they could get out of that weather. They indicated they might, it might be nice if there was electricity, so they could plug in a phone or a tablet if they had that. It'd be neat, they said, if there might be Wi-Fi there. They would maybe go there to study, hang out with other friends. After they studied a little bit, maybe they'd play in the park. Kick a soccer ball, play volleyball, throw a frisbee. They also mentioned, it would be nice if there was some type of, they called it funky furniture. You know, some type of, something they could sit out, sit on and hang out in.
Something besides a picnic table or a bench.
Or a bench, yep. We did hear that people wanted picnic tables at the parks, maybe a theater space and an outdoor, outside amphitheater. So those were some of the amenities we heard. We asked about new recreation activities people would like to see. We asked that because sometimes you say there's activities you want, but you don't have the facility for them, and that tells us that maybe there's a need for that facility. So again, here, we got a pretty good number of responses. The highest number were for tween programs and aquatic programs. There was interest in childcare while you were participating in programs. Classes, life skills classes, career development, job training. That came from the teens that we talked to. It also came from the seniors that we talked to. More family events, young adult programs. We heard from a couple of different people who were in our meeting who have no children. They're in their twenties and thirties, and they would like to participate in activities. One mentioned like cornhole tournaments and, and different things, but they'd like to be able to kind of play adult sports. Open gym opportunities was another. We asked who some of the key partners or stakeholders in the community might be. And we asked that to make sure that we're aware, and the town is aware of everybody who we should be talking to, and who might be potentially involved in helping with some of the recommendations that come out of a master plan. Not everything is listed up here, but the ones that we heard, in no, no particular order, we heard the town council, the RTM, the skateboard group, Pfizer, Rotary Club, and all the other service organizations. Groton Utilities, local banks, the Groton Parks Foundation, Navy Leadership Chamber Converse, the Youth Advisory Committee, a conservation group, Tri-Town Trail, the Department of Agriculture, Avery Point Nature Center, the MWR at the sub-base, community resource officers in the Police Department, electric boat, bike Groton, greater open space, deep, the school district, faith-based organizations. And then there were several other small businesses that were mentioned, but we don't normally put them up there, because we don't want to put, and miss out, and leave someone We then asked about key issues and values. We asked about key issues, because we'd like to know if there's anything that could affect our plan that might be happening. Lisa talked about the project before at the Pratt Facility. Also, I've been told it's called the Oral School, the School of the Deaf. That space was being considered for something. If that had continued to go forward, it would affect our plan. We would, you know, we would want to know about that. The same with, it's important that we know that some schools have recently been closed. So we, we asked, were there any big key issues that we should know about? And we also asked, what were some of the values of the town that we should be aware of, so we made sure we didn't change, change that, or cause that not to be as effective? So some of the key issues we heard. The town of Groton has become a regional department. So what some people are saying is, it's not just the residents that are using the parks and the facilities, it's people from outside of the community. So we just, we wanted to make sure we're aware of that. The government structure is unique. This is not me, this is what people said, in a negative way. The issue of turf versus grass. For those, if you don't know, turf is-
Recording in progress.
Turf is a slang name for artificial turf. It's a field that's not real grass typically. So there's, you know, some debates about that possibly. The facilities are being used by many outside groups, could be an issue. Climate change and green, green initiatives. The EB, Electric Boat bringing two thousand-plus staff to increase sub-production is an issue. There's gonna be more people coming to your community, more multi-family homes and mall, more apartments and houses being built. Fort Griswold, the push to redevelop the schools and the housing, and budgetary values and priorities were, what we were told were key issues that we need to make sure we're aware of. We asked about values. You know, what were the values in the community? What made people move here, want to live here, want to stay here? Sense of community, diversity. Value transient nature and hospitality, quality of life, natural resources, the water. Parks and Recreation is hospitable. The historic value. The fact that people value their sports here. Programs are inclusive. Great local small stores. Ease of navigation in the town. Equity of the state. And perpetuity of residents were things we heard. Then we asked people to tell us if they, give us one priority that should come out of this plan. And we asked them to do that at the end of the meeting. And what I saw, that I thought was unique, were, we had a lot of conversations, and several people said, "I came into the focus group, and I was gonna make sure I told you, this is what you needed to do. But now I've listened to fifteen other people. I still think what I want to do is important, but it might not be the most important thing." Because I didn't know, you know, that that was an issue, or that group wasn't, has served as well as my group. So some of the things we heard were, still a priority, quite a few times, was an aquatic facility. A community recreation center. Lighted outdoor field complex. Multi-use trails. Improving staffing. Property maintenance, maintain what we have. Make sure the plan is achievable. Budget and funding should be a priority. Address the underserved. We kind of really like this one. Want everyone to see themselves in the plan. To see that the plan is gonna help everyone. Building a foundation for the youth. Inclusiveness for differently-abled people. Equal access. Fields and aquatic facilities together. Future investment. Realistic projections of growth. A clear master plan that doesn't change. Parking at facilities. And then, expansion of Avery Point Agreement. Those were some of the priorities that we heard. In a second, we're gonna open this up for comments, questions, and feedback. And I'll go anywhere in the presentation you want. If you want to say, "I think I have a strength," I'd like to look at what strengths were said. We'll go back there. We wanted to let you know our next steps. As Mark said, we're gonna be doing a survey. You may receive a postcard in the mail. If you receive a postcard in the mail, there is a QR code that you can take a smartphone, a tablet, click on it, and it will populate that survey for you. There's your URL code, URL link that you can type into your computer, your iPad, your phone, and take the survey. You have the ability to come to the community center, Thrive Fifty-five Center, contact Parks and Recreation, and ask for a paper survey. If you get a paper survey and you have a postcard, there's a little link, or a couple of numbers, a code you would enter on it. Fill out the survey, turn it back in, and then they'll give it to us, and it would be counted like every other survey. If you don't get a postcard, a couple of weeks after that survey runs its course, there'll be advertisement on the Greater Groton site in the buildings. And you can go on a computer, a smartphone, a tablet, and enter in a URL code and take what's called an open links survey. You also can just come to the building and ask for a paper survey. Or you can go to the community center, or you could contact Mark. So, and I know that we've already heard that in this building, they're gonna use the technology room and be available if anyone wants to come and take the survey. We talked to people from the, this morning, the English has a second language group. There's a couple people there that are gonna help out spreading the word of the survey. We talked to a few people from the school district, and they're also considering putting out the information through the schools for that link. So we're hoping we get a, a lot of involvement. Oh, I didn't finish, sorry. We're doing what's called a demographic and a trend study. We have some people on our team that study that. We're gonna see what this town has done previously, and then we do our own study. It helps us understand how your town is gonna change in the next five, ten, fifteen years. What is gonna be the average age of people that live here? How many people are gonna live here? What type of income will be available? What jobs might be here? We also look at trends. As I said, we travel a little bit, and we do a lot of projects. So we're really up to date on all the national trends. But we then look at the regional trends and the local trends. So we have a person on our team who will be studying those specific, as specific as we can get to the town of Groton. We'll do a level of service analysis. That's our friend Amy with the bike out in the park. She's looking at all your parks, and she's gonna be rating them and scoring them and providing us with information, recommendations for improvements. We're gonna look at the recreation programs, look at how they might be changed, retooled, updated if need be. We're gonna look at finance organizational and maintenance of the department. We do a partnership and funding exercise to help out. As Mark said, we'll come back again in early spring and do a findings presentation. Be somewhat similar to this, but we'll show you the results of the survey. We'll show you the results of Amy's work and what we think of the parks. And we'll tell you where we are with themes and ideas. We won't have made decisions. And we'll ask you, you know, do we have this right? Did we miss something? Do you have other things that we need to look at? We do a visioning workshop with the, Mark and his staff in the town. And then we'll come back one more time and do a draft plan presentation. So you'll see our whole report with the recommendations and everything. And again, we'll say, here's where we're at, it's a draft. Is there something we missed? Do you have questions? Is there something you'd like us to look at differently? That's what the postcard roughly might look like. It's a sample, just so you could kind of see. It'll be two-sided. It has a URL code where you could click, has information on it. So I'd like to open it up now, if anyone has a question or a comment, a suggestion, anything. If you raise your hand. You want to come up, sir? And the people watching online, you're gonna have an opportunity to. I believe that mic is on. If you'd introduce yourself and-
I'm Mitch Sullivan. I've been a resident for fifteen years. I'm one of the local coaches for the baseball teams. The baseball fields are in some really bad conditions. The Washington Park, their home plate is above ground level where the kids are gonna get hurt. I've already, we've asked the city to fix them, and there's towns. The Calvin Burrows Field, every time it rains, it turns into a river. You know, it's, and we were looking for a fifty-seventy field, which I know they have in the works, but we really need it for, like you said, the tweens, which my boy is. And the, between the majors and the senior league, there's nowhere for them to go between. If we don't get this field done, we've tried working with other towns, and nothing's worked. They never called us back, or they gave us trouble about it. But the baseball fields really need to be upgraded. The facilities and all.
All right, thank you. We've heard that in our focus groups. We'll definitely be asking about fields, both rectangle and diamond on our survey. And we'll be asking opinions of lighted fields, not lighted fields, synthetic fields, grass fields, in the larger survey. Would you like to come up? Does anyone else have a question or a comment? Come on up. I believe that's how the town proceeds with the-
All right, is this on? Okay. All right, so I have a list. My name is Haika Holly. I've lived here, um, lived here since the mid-sixties. So I'm that old.
Okay. Twenty-two plus, got it?
Yeah, I'm thirty-nine again. So I have a list of things. You mentioned, a lot of people mentioned a pool, and I would love a pool as well. I used to swim regularly when there was a pool at the Mystic Education Center, which has since been shut down. Second water-related thing is, I also paddleboard, and there's a boat launch at, on River Road, it's at the I-95 overpass. And it's in a really rough shape. It's just sort of sand, gravel, rocks. And if you bring in a paddleboard or a kayak down that boat launch, it's easy to slip and lose your footing. So it needs a little TLC. So you mentioned earlier that some, that some people said that facilities are a weakness, and I tend to agree with that. It seems like everything's sort of makeshift, makeshift, haphazard. The example is, I had to do a yoga class on Monday nights, we've been doing for years. And we're always kind of shuffled around to different places, whatever classroom might be available, you know, whatever. Right now, we're in the GCC, in what used to be the library, and we just kind of get shuffled into whatever room is available, and it's not really ever just a dedicated ideal facility for that. ideal facility for that. I did hear that there's some federal money that the town was trying to figure out what to spend it on, and I could see that being spent on a proper community center that would be, you know, something fresh, new, with dedicated facilities for, you know, different classes, uses, whatnot, which could include a pool. The Claude Chester School property here comes to mind. It's a big, flat, open space that would, could be ideal for something like that. Last on my list is I recently took up pickleball with a lot of other folks. We play indoors at the GCC in the gym, and that's all well and good, but it's such a fast-growing sport that we also could use some dedicated outdoor courts. And we're playing right now on Fitch High School tennis courts in the summer, or at Farquhar Park, which is on Route 117, and it's tennis courts that are marked as pickleball. And again, it's kind of a makeshift thing, so something dedicated for pickleball, which is really fast-growing, up and coming, would be great.
Okay, thank you very much. If you were doing any of that on Monday, we might have saw you because we were in the GCC.
Yeah.
And we saw different classes, and we saw three different places we went. We saw people playing pickleball.
In the gym.
Indoor and on tennis courts.
Yep, got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone on Zoom have a comment? Okay. Anyone else? Hang on one second in the room. What's the comment from Zoom?
Richard, can you, can you unmute?
And then Paul has his hand up too, it says. Okay, try Paul.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, I just want a second. The pickleball issue, currently there are no dedicated courts, and I played in all the courts around at our makeshift, and I play probably four or five times a week. There's a large pickleball community at times. Farquhar Courts are backed up with people waiting to play, and in fact, there has been some people, who I won't mention, who actually lined the basketball court with duct tape for pickleball courts, and those are sometimes played on also. So there's a great need for that. All the, it's a self-sustaining sport. In the GCC, it's one of the ones that makes the most money, and there have been several grants also submitted for using COVID funds. I'm not sure what happened to that. And there's also been petitions to add dedicated pickleball courts, and I'm not sure what the response of that is. But some of the makeshift courts really are not very acceptable. The ones behind GCC are very rough, and they're not really good courts. The hockey rink was lined, and I helped paint the hockey rink, but that turned into, that's very slippery and is not that safe. I played in the senior center, and that's good for learning how to play, but once you get more advanced, the limited space in there actually becomes dangerous, and people will run into walls. So, you know, I think with the growing numbers of people, dedicated pickleball courts are something that should be on your list. All the surrounding communities are adding them. Montville is adding them. Wyndham, a small town in northeastern Connecticut, added six pickleball courts. Waterford is looking at them. Stonington's building two dedicated courts. Fitch ones, there's an active community that goes to Fitch almost three or four times a week, and sometimes that's full with pickleball players, and generally gets used at night with pickleball players more than tennis players. Anyway.
All right.
So that's really my comment.
Thank you very much, Paul. We're pretty aware of the pickleball activity and phase. We're working on a project actually together, Lisa and I, in Sandpoint, Idaho, for an indoor pickleball facility.
Great, thanks. Yeah, and I just didn't see it on your list at all. The second thing I'd like to mention is that there's boating facilities, but there isn't any thing, any place where, for example, a small sailboat could be kept. And I'm not sure if that's something that was noted. For example, like the Stonington Boating Club, they have a place where you could keep a small sailboat. But in Groton, which is near Mystic, there's no recreational facility where you could, for example, park a small sailboat on a beach like a Laser or Sunfish.
Okay, yeah, you're the first that asked for that, but we'll add that to the list and see where we go with it.
And the third thing is the, the biking. For a long time, the reservoir, I know you, you're probably aware of this, has been obstructing, making a tri-town trail, and I'm not, and hopefully there we'll see some loosening of their obstruction, but other communities have used their reservoir facilities. For example, the West Hartford Reservoir up near Farmington and West Hartford, Connecticut, have an excellent facility for hiking and biking trails around the reservoir. So I'm not sure why that isn't more available to the public.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
So Janet Anderson, and I've been here not quite five years in that group. So where I came from, northern Massachusetts, and this, it's a long-term process, is looking at ways to link facilities, potentially with multi-use trails, so folks can be off-road, they're not using their car, and they can get one from one to another with ease. And it really encourages families to use the facilities because they might not be in the same building. And another thought is where doable, to have clusters of some of your facilities, so that a tween or a teen, parents, and the younger kids can all be in proximity, doing their own thing, but it really would facilitate transportation and participation.
Okay, thank you very much. The first one, we kind of call connectivity, and we're looking at that. And the second one is maybe an all-in-one facility. You had your hand up back there? Come on up. You've won a prize.
Hi, my name is Hazel Levine, and this past season, I took over a volunteer job as fields manager for the local Groton Soccer Club, and I was surprised, I've only lived here four years now, but I've done this job in other towns because my husband's military, and I was surprised at how often this season, the fields at Paquonic Plains were closed due to rain. And then without lights at night, we also weren't able to play, so our practice times were so limited that I found that it's possible that could correlate to us not being competitive with other local towns that are around. And I was, I was just taken aback by that this season, so thank you.
Thank you for the comment. What activity do you participate in? Do you want to come up and talk? Do you want the microphone? Let us know what you'd like in parks? Do you want me to bring the microphone to you?
I play basketball, lacrosse, and baseball.
Okay, what do you think of the parks?
Um, we should definitely have more fields for like the outside sports, like lacrosse, baseball, soccer, and all the other outside sports, setting these fields, because ours are getting rusty and they're getting messed up, and...
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have a comment? Come on up.
My name is Wendy Kelleher, and I've been in Mystic for 22 years. And I'm here, number one, I saw your presentation, and I'm very surprised that the walking trails got a bad mark, because I hike all the time in Groton, and I have no complaints. We have terrific open space here. Mostly, I'm here in favor of dedicated pickleball courts, and I don't really have anything to add to what the others have said, but it's such an up and coming sport that I think it's really important to plan for the future. They were in Parade Magazine, they're on the Today Show. We're, we're going to be in trouble if we don't build more courts, so.
Thank you. And I think the reason, our understanding a little bit with the, the trails, there's people that hike that think the trails are very nice, there's people that want to walk that have maybe a little bit of mobility issues, or they want to push a stroller or push a wheelchair, and people that wanted to ride mountain bikes and things like that. So I think it kind of all is grouped together at the moment. But like I said, Amy is taking a look at all of that, so thank you for your comments. Anyone else would like to make a comment? I can bring it to you if it's easier, and anybody on Zoom? Same number of people?
Marsha Zimmerman. I was teaching swimming here for many years, and I retired, and then the pool closed. And I see not just the need for swimming, for training to swim, but as a physical fitness center, a recreational center, a family center, a place for teams, a place for meets for outside area coming in to have meets. I look at it for special needs and any sort of adaptive needs for all people. I look at it in a sense for teaching babies and preschoolers to swim so that they're safe the rest of their lives. I believe in the fact that if you have a pool of any form, you're going to have, you're going to be teaching people to be safe, so you're going to have either Red Cross or Y Training or something in that nature. And I really feel we're right on top of the water, and we always see all these different scary accidents that happen on our coastlines, and I feel like we're skipping taking care of all children and young people so that, that they have a real understanding of water safety for themselves and for their future families. And I also feel like it's, this is a community that just needs to focus, and besides the pickleball courts, which I want to see people have too, I think we need a good facility for water participation and safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have a comment? Want to make a comment, a question?
Yeah, I'd like to make a question. This is Richard Loach from, I'm the president of the Groton Soccer Club. I've lived here for just under seven years, and I want to first, firstly, agree with the person, the lady that mentioned how the quality of the trails, I think they're, on the whole, pretty excellent. But obviously, you know, there's always room for improvement. And secondly, my colleague Hazel on the soccer club, you know, mentioned the field, kind of limited field situation, and I just, you know, want to emphasize our support and desire to have more, more fields, synthetic fields. I feel like the situation we have with various unused schools right now is, is kind of a good opportunity, since, you know, it's pretty cost-effective to knock down those, those buildings and just have open space for both basketball courts, synthetic turf, and a bit more grass as well for, for a variety of sports. I think soccer is, at least among the, the younger demographic in, in the US, is, is one of the most rapidly growing sports, and I think we need to try and accommodate that. If, you know, other towns like Waterford and, and other neighboring towns have, have lighted facilities so that kids can play later and have, you know, we can accommodate more practices, so that as well would be, would be fantastic if we could get something like that in the future. I just have one quick question as well, so I don't want to hog the mic, the people's time, but with this, this master plan, so to speak, I'm sorry, I haven't read all the details around it, is this related to a certain amount, like a certain precise amount of funding that, that the town is, is coming into, or is this kind of just like trying to develop a medium to long-term plan for what, what to build next in the town?
We have, we have not been made aware of a specific amount of funding that's available. This is a system-wide master plan, and we're looking to give recommendations for the next, you know, one to three years, three to five, five to seven.
Okay.
You know, big projects, little projects, you know, basically to address what we hear are the needs. And I think what I'd like to say to you and everyone that's here, we're hearing from different representatives of different groups, that's wonderful. Lisa and I are hearing that, we're seeing that. It's going to help us build our survey, but what's really going to help convince the town council and others is coming out to the survey in numbers and maybe coming to future meetings. You know, if you, if you're, if you get a hold of swimmers, you get a hold of soccer players, you get a hold of all your little lacrosse players and soccer and basketball players, and you get a hold of the hikers and the pickleballers, and, you know, and they give input into the survey, that does carry a lot of weight. Thank you for your comments.
Sure thing, thanks.
Anyone else have a comment or a question? Anybody, come on up. The, the survey is going to be coming out in the next couple of weeks. We don't draft the survey till we come and learn. So our job tonight, when we go back to the hotel, is to summarize what we heard from you today, and hopefully tomorrow, we'll send some information to our survey firm, so that next week, they'll give us a draft of the survey to share with Mark. And in the next, you know, we're hoping in a week or two to have a survey out, so we would, you know, we're hoping to have it before Thanksgiving if possible, if not, right after Thanksgiving, it just depends. We are going to pay attention to the holidays, we're going to do our best, but this, you know, when the town asks us to start is, is now. But it'll be coming out in the next couple of weeks. If the mailed one, you could fill it out for the whole length of the survey. Ideally, we'd like you to fill it out when you get it in a day or two, but that will go for two or three weeks, depending how many returns we get, and then the open link will be available. So there's a good four or five week period where people could take a survey. Unfortunately, it is going to probably go over Thanksgiving or be before Christmas, but we're going to pay attention to all of that as best we can. The mailed, statistically valid survey are going to be sent to post addresses in the town of Groton, and the city is within the town, but if you are a business, you might get it if you, if your business is within the town. The open link survey, anyone could theoretically take it. There will be questions that ask where you live, what part of the town, what's your zip code, so we pay attention to that. But yes, you know, somebody who lives 10 miles outside of town could take the open link survey. Other questions, comments? Do you think, you know, was there anything major that we missed as far as it's going to help us build our survey? Were there any amenities that you'd like to have asked about? Yeah, we haven't got to the survey, but we will be asking pickleball for sure. Yep. But believe it or not, for whatever it was, in the desired amenities, the people in our group, there weren't more than one or two people that mentioned it. That doesn't, we already know about it, believe me. You know, like I said, we saw it being played in three places. Yep. And when we ask questions about, like, do you have a desire for an aquatic center? You know, we'll ask about an indoor and an outdoor, and what type of things would you want in an aquatic center? We're not going to ask about if it's, whether you want locker rooms and restrooms, that's just kind of assumed with an aquatic center. When we're asking about a field, we'll ask, you know, is it rectangle fields, is it diamond fields, is it synthetic turf, is it natural grass, should it be lit? There we will ask about some other amenities. And what's really great about the group we work with for our survey, there will be a, at the end of every question, there'll be an open comment. So for instance, if we say, you know, please tell us which of these amenities you like, and your amenity's not there, you can write it in, and, you know, if many people write it in, then, you know, we'll know more about it. Yes, ma'am?
Can you come up just because the meeting's being broadcast? It's Hazel Levine again. The only thing I thought of is you said you wanted to be aware of things that might affect this, and I would just, and one thing I noticed that wasn't on there was that in January of...
was that in January of 2022, the NEAR, or the National Estuarian Research Reserve, was appointed outside of Connecticut here, and Bluff Point is one of the places where it's protected now by this, and this Paquonic River drains right into it. So that might be something that you could use to your advantage by building more recreational facilities that could enhance that. So I just want to point that out.
Okay, thank you very much. I know that Mark showed us a facility where they were changing the type of parking lot to be pervious, sorry, I didn't want to come out. And they were also doing some things with some native plants and landscaping to help the runoff. Other questions or comments? Anything you want me to go back and show you again? How were the meatballs? There's more meatballs, there's cookies. What do you like to see in the parks? Do you want to tell us? You want to come up and tell us?
I'm Iris Levine, and I would like to definitely see, well, so the fields like flood every time it rains, because it's actually part of a swamp area, and and all the road waste is going into it, which makes it not a safe water, because I know when I play soccer on Paquonic Plains, a lot of kids want to just go into it, and, but it's not that safe, because it has all this road waste going into it. So I'd like to see not as much road waste in the water. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and hopefully you're teaching me how to say Paquonic Plains. Anyone else have a question or a comment? We normally set aside an hour and a half for these meetings, and we're at an hour and almost fifteen. Happy to stay and talk if anyone has anything. If not, we'll probably stop and stop the recording. Please do look. Did you, I think Mark gave some of you that solid card that shows you how to get to greater Groton? You can go there, you can, using, there's a device called a PIN, and you can drop a PIN where you think there should be a park, or where there should be pickleball courts, or a pool, or trails, or where you think there's a maintenance issue. There's a wall there where you can add comments. Periodically, we'll ask questions there. We will post that the survey has been mailed out. So once the survey's approved, our company will say to us that, you know, you've now approved the survey, and we've sent it to the printer for mailing and so forth, and then they'll tell us when it's anticipated to arrive in mailboxes. So then we'll let Mark know that, so they can promote that, so that there can be information out in the community that this is the week you should look in your mailbox to see if you got a survey. And then, you know, once that runs its course, we'll promote again when the open link survey is available. Okay, we have a question online?
Oh, hi, yes. I just wanted to mention regarding the trails, that there's an excellent interactive trail guide online in Groton, but it's hard to find, and maybe increasing communication regarding that link might be helpful, because I found trails, you know, and I've hiked here for years, and I found trails on it that I had never seen before, but I kind of, you know, accidentally found this interactive trail guide online. It's not easy to find, it's kind of down several layers in the website.
In the Town of Groton's Parks and Recreation website?
Yes, yeah, and it's very good. It's, you know, you can select a site, you can find different trails, you can see the trails in all the different parks in town, but it's not very easy to find from the main website if you're interested in trails. You know, you go to several different areas and you try to find, I was just trying to find it again, and I had to go to several different areas until I finally found it again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else? I'll just put this up, and this presentation, I believe Mark will post it on the website. I know it was streamed and recorded. They should have an end button on these things to go to the end, but anyhow. That's our, our names and our email address, if you wanted to contact us. I have a business card if you had an interest in it. Like I said, I remember seeing several of you in our focus groups. We hope to see you when we come back at our findings presentation, and then when we come back again for other presentations, so. Thank you very much.
The last thing that I would say is, I know we promoted, let me go back to the floor real quick, is share that with your group, share that with your lacrosse team pair, share that with your pickleball friends, and all of your swim friends, because that too is another form of us to capture that information, as Tom said. We analyze qualitative and quantitative data when we're doing this process. So as much information as we can get on both sides of that gamut is helpful. Share, post it on your social media pages.
I know in several of the projects we've done, we've had, I just walked and handed them all up. Okay. We've had groups like the Pickleballers, we've had fifty of them show up in Meridian Pickleball T-shirts, and I've had, you know, entire lacrosse teams show up, and I've had, you know, entire bird watchers show up and things like that. So you can get your group motivated, and taking the survey would be one way, and then coming to the next meeting would be another, so. Thank you all for your time, have a wonderful night.